Ms. Anderson?
President.
Ms. Bolden Bryant? President Ellis?
President.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Here.
Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're going into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Can I get a motion, please?
Summit.
Second.
Any questions? Can we get a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolden Bryant? President Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna...
Six oh two.
Six oh two.
Okay.
We're gonna ask, we're gonna stay here and ask everyone to go. Chuck will lead everybody.
We got requests standing up.
There's a machine you can buy.
Executive session is seven twenty-two. Took y'all a little few minutes to walk back down here, so.
Yeah, you kept us waiting all that time.
Okay. You've had a chance to look at the agenda.
Ms. Ellis? Well, Vonda just gave me. I need to amend the agenda. Under the two-year contracts, we need to add.
Where, 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 where are we at? What page is that? Did the two-year contract, are you just putting it?
Hold on, I'll tell you. Page seventeen.
Okay.
Lindsay Ferguson would be added under the two-year contracts as dean of students.
Who?
Lindsay Ferguson.
No, the second one is it?
Uh, the dean of students at North Elementary. Step one.
And this is at North?
Yes, at North Elementary. She was just recently hired.
And she's gonna be doing what?
She will be dean of students at North.
Is that Lindsay spelled with an A or an E?
Um, S-E.
Huh?
It's S-E one.
S-E one. Okay. What's the number?
That's it.
That's it, you say it hurts?
Yes.
This is a two-year?
Two-year, yes.
All right. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda with the necessary corrections?
Summit.
Second.
Got any questions? Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Carol?
Ms. Ellis?
Okay.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, the board has had a chance to look at the minutes of the meeting held on May the fifteenth. Uh, can I get a motion to accept them?
Summit.
Second.
Is there any changes, corrections? Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, under special orders, is anybody from the teachers association?
No.
Okay. Okay, you got any comments, announcements?
Um, we do have a request from Anna Shell to come and speak.
Um, I just want to invite everybody to Mount Hill Park on July third. Um, the athletic instructors will be over there, plus, um, it'll be the cheerleading and football, running concessions. Um, so, and support you to give that night and whatever. What do you want?
What time?
Start at five.
Five.
And the historical society will be selling cookies, ice cream, and ice cr- and, uh, root beer floats from, I forget the times.
Oh, okay. I can't say. I had one of their hamburgers last year.
Six to nine.
Really good. July third. Thank you.
And this is the Boasters?
Yeah, that athletic instructors and then, um, cheerleading and football.
At Mount Healthy Day.
Yeah, the fireworks. And if you've never been, it, for a small city, it's a really good fireworks show.
Okay.
We gotta do something. Okay. Uh, for those members of the audience who do not wish to stay for the business portion of this meeting, now is the appropriate time for you to leave this meeting. I know you all didn't wanna leave. Oh. All right, um, this is gonna be short and to the point. On the Great Oaks, um, thing. The highlights of our June meeting was definitely where we reviewed the strategies and goals that were given to the board for the school year and this, of the CFO and the CEO. So, the treasure strategy is to provide leadership through financial stewardship, improve operational efficiency and utilization of resources, and three, provide effective communication to the stakeholders of Great Oaks Career Campus. The strategy of the president is student achievement, exceptional engagement, exception engagement. And strategy two was exceptional culture and exceptional collaboration. And a strategy three was safety of the facilities. And that's all we talked about. So, that's all that was going on that day. And that's the end of my report. Um, Ms. Anderson, you wanna do the legislative, please?
Sure. Um, during the May meeting of the Ohio State Board of Education, the board voted to approve Chris Willard as the interim state superintendent. Um, the outgoing superintendent Stephanie Sidens left to become the deputy superintendent of Arlington City Schools. Um, Senate Bill eleven, which would expand eligibility for Ed Choice vouchers to all students, beginning with vouchers sought for the twenty twenty-three to twenty-four school year, um, and increases homeschool expense tax credit from two hundred and fifty dollars to two thousand dollars is currently in the Senate Education Committee right now. Um, Senate Bill, um, one one two, one twelve, also known as the Ohio Childhood Safety Act, has been referred to the Senate Education Committee. This bill requires school buildings to comply with the national life safety standards. House Bill two six has been referred to the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee. This bill relates to the expulsion of a student from a public school for actions that endanger the health and safety of other students or school employees. And finally, House Bill one eighty-three regards to single-sex bathroom access in primary and secondary schools and institutions of higher learning. Uh, this bill has been referred to the higher Hou- the House Higher Education Committee.
I guess I could read it, but do you offhand know what, what they're talking about in this, uh, Bill one one two?
Um, I don't remember offhand because I had two months worth to look through because there were two months between last meeting and now. Um, and there were about a thousand new bills on there.
Okay.
But I can send you, I did, um, read over them a couple of days ago and I can send you. I know that there was, I, there wasn't a lot of information in the email about this, but I did read a little bit about it before I put it on here. I'll send you what's in the email or the looks like I looked at.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Now we'll have the reports from the treasurer.
I have a recommendation for the board to accept the financial statements for April twenty twenty-three and May twenty twenty-three.
Can I get a motion?
Summit.
Second.
You have any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
I have a recommendation to authorize the treasurer to make any advances or transfer of funds as may be required to close out fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Can I get a motion? Who said?
Ms. Bryant.
Um. You have any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
I have a recommendation to adopt fiscal year twenty twenty-three final appropriations within the county auditor's amended certificate.
Can I get a motion?
Summit. Please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? If not, can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Also have a recommendation to adopt fiscal year twenty twenty-four annual appropriations within the county auditor's amended certificate.
Cool. Who's second?
I'll second.
Okay. You have any questions? Can we get roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Also have a recommendation to approve a resolution to adopt tax rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Can I get a motion?
Summit.
Second.
Ms. Bryant?
Which one is?
Ms. Bryant?
No, it was me.
Oh, Turner?
You have any question? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And my last one is a recommendation to authorize the treasurer to request the county auditor to make advanced payments of taxes for the twenty twenty-four calendar year, fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Can I have a motion?
Summit.
Second.
Is there any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, thank you. Uh, can we have the superintendent's report?
Thank you. I do want to just point out, this is Kim's first official board meeting, so we are so happy and she did a great job on her first official report, so good job. We did celebrate our graduation last month, seems like longer, but it was a wonderful graduation. And one thing that someone pointed out, my, my family randomly surprised me, but one thing that they were so, um, just really amazed by, they said that our students clapped for every student, even all the way to the last one. And they had been to some other graduations where that just wasn't happening, they were just ready to end it, and they were so impressed. And I thought, you know, we have amazing students. And so, that is just another example. It was such a great night. Everyone just was celebrating, and I thought our students did an amazing job at graduation. Under our informational items, we do have a few change orders for our Mount Healthy Culinary Arts addition. The first one is just the electrical permits, and there's no amount with that, so. But it is a change order because they did it. The change order thirteen, additional duct work that's in the weight room, creating that space that we mentioned earlier, two thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-two cents. And then we actually got a refund of a thousand dollars because the cores did not cost as much. These aren't actual items, we just like to list them so that you're aware of the extra cost or credits that come in. The next section, grants. And so, we've received many grants over this last month. Jana and her staff and Connie, they have just been working like crazy. Some are title grants, but then there are others that are competitive. So, you can just look, you know, we received for Title III, forty thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents, specifically for immigrant students, four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents for supporting effective education, two hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty cents for improving basic programming, two million four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, eight hundred and twenty-seven and thirteen cents for academic enrichment, one hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Special education, nine hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-five cents. Expanding opportunities, twenty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents for supplemental school improvement, sixty-six thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. We also received another thousand dollars for the Visual Arts Summer Project, and that was done with the quilting at the high school. Maud Hager did that in honoring of Juneteenth. And so, she had a special event at the high school for that. Mount Healthy will also be contracting with Nova Care for our athletic training services. So, those are all just a lot of informational items, a lot of good news with money received to make a difference for our students. Item B is recommendation to file a consolidated continuous improvement plan, which we refer to as CCIP, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. This allows us to use the money that we just were talking about in different title buckets, and those are all listed there.
Can I have a motion to accept that?
Summit.
Second.
Any question? Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the recommendation to adopt a resolution of participation in the following programs for FY twenty twenty-four. Title I, Part A, Title I, Non-Competitive Supplemental School Improvement. Title II-A, Title III, which is Language Instruction for English Learners. Title III, Immigrant. Title IV, Special Education IDEA Part B. ECSE, Early Childhood Special Education. Comprehensive Literacy State Development, Expanding Opportunities for Each Child, and ARPSer.
Okay, can we get a motion?
Summit.
Second.
Any questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item D is recommendation to approve the renewal of the Ohio School Plan Insurance Policy. This policy covers district-wide insurance for cyber property, violence, auto liability, and pollution, and it would be effective through the next school year.
Can we get a motion, please?
Summit.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, do we have any dollar amount? For this, by two?
I don't. We can get that.
We're actually meeting with them in the morning.
I'm sorry.
We're actually meeting with them in the morning.
Okay.
And this is a renewal.
Okay.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Best Point Educational and Behavioral Health for school-based behavioral health services for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and the cost is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Can I get a motion, please?
Summit.
Second.
You have any questions?
It's for the entire district. This is a different type of service. This is, like, we have students that might be on an IEP that we have to have specific number of minutes until we contract with them to provide that mental health support primarily in relation to that. So, the health clinic at the high school can be used by any students. This is a more prescribed care. Great question.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F, we received several donations, which is super exciting. We received two hundred and eighty dollars donated by Saint Paul United Church of Christ to purchase library books for South Elementary in memory of Marilyn Blay, who was a former librarian at Greener Elementary. We received five hundred dollars from Scott Peterson for the Mount Healthy Football Program. A hundred dollars was donated by Michael and Pamela Stawn for the Mount Healthy Football Program. Three hu- thousand dollars was donated by Dustin and Elise Woods for the Mount Healthy Football Program. Two thousand was donated by the Knights of Columbus to purchase a merry-go-round cycle for the Early Learning Center in memory of Lori Moore. Lori was our teacher at the Early Learning Center that passed away last year. Eight hundred dollars was donated by the We Thrive Community for the Mount Healthy Cheerleading Program.
Can we have a motion, please?
Summit.
Any questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is the recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing in lieu of transportation pays for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and there was an updated list attached.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Summit.
Second.
Any questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item H is the recommendation to approve Medicare transportation as a provider for special needs, homeless, and foster student transportation for the twenty-two, or the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And that, Kim had us include just the estimated cost. This is what we spent last year, just so the board would have kind of an idea of what we spend on that.
Can we have a motion, please?
Summit.
Second. Any questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Thank you. Item I is the recommendation to have doses of naloxone available in the health clinic slash nurses' office at Mount Healthy High School, the junior and senior high. This is a, um, prescription that is used if someone were to show up at our school or an after-school event, and they thought a drug overdose had happened. This is something that could be accessed very quickly by medical professionals and given.
I got a question. I guess I could do it later, but what if it belongs to the junior and senior high?
Well, I guess that's a great question. We could modify it to put it in.
No, I mean.
Yeah, you're right. Absolutely.
I mean, kids get hold of stuff.
You're, you're right. So, I think that's a great, we should probably modify it to have it in all of our health plans.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, Carol.
All right. Can I get a motion, please?
Is that what we're doing here?
Yeah.
Are we modifying it?
I, I think that's a great suggestion. To modify it to put it in all of our.
All the school buildings.
All of our school buildings in the clinic area.
So, it would be recommendation to have doses of naloxone available in the health clinic nurses' office at all Mount Healthy City School Buildings.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, with the modification, can I have a motion?
Summit, oh, second.
Bryant and Turner? Any question?
Anderson.
Oh, Anderson.
All right.
All right. Do you have any other questions? Okay, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's too late for a question, but I have a question suddenly. Um, would that be accessible during events also?
It would.
Okay.
And we have different trainers that have access to the clinics.
Okay.
I don't know where it's supposed to, do we have one of the little AEDs down on the field?
We do.
I, I didn't see one, but I, I'm not saying it's not there.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Yeah. We had that ribbon cutting and it's. Yeah, concession stand.
And you know, I work down there, but I don't.
It's on the outside.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, go on.
Okay, thank you. Item J is the recommendation to upgrade the current weighted grade average. Currently, our weighted grade average says any class that is honors level or above has a five-point A. That is unusual. Typically, the five-point As are normally reserved for either college credit plus classes or AP classes. So, I'm making the recommendation to change the weighted average so that just CCP, college cred- which is college credit plus, or AP classes would have the five-point A. Honors courses would have an additional bump. It would be a four-point five A. And then all other courses would have your traditional four-point A. Also, I did want to note that we are adding classes from the Oaks. In the past, when we received classes from a career and tech school, even though they may be honors level or college level, for some reason, they were only given a four-point A, and we are making that modification so that it, our students are not penalized academically if they choose to attend a career and tech school.
But you know, let me ask you something. If, if the class was a college-level class at the Oaks, you're saying that on our end, you were giving them something less?
We were. We were giving. And the reason that came in, the Oaks sends a big file of grades that's just uploaded. So, they recommended an A as four-point. So, they recommend grades and we accept grades, but we had not taken the time to actually look through and find the college credit plus classes and make sure that they were being weighted properly. And most, most schools in the area, just only if you go to the vocational schools, the career and tech schools, they will only give a four-point A even if it's considered higher or a college class. And so, we are making the distinction to make sure that they receive the weighted credit.
But that does not interfere as far as them getting credit at the college level?
It does not. And most of those classes are transcribed, which mean, you know, they already have a transcript. If you take a class at Cincinnati State, you took it at Great Oaks, you actually have a college credit, but it was just being recognized in our system as a four-point, not a five-point A.
Okay. Okay, can I get a motion to accept that change?
Summit.
One second.
Any questions? Oh, yes. I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item K is the recommendation to approve Conger Construction Group as the construction manager for the construction of the elevator and the new main entrance at the administrative buildings.
Can we get a motion?
So moved. Take your pick.
Okay, we'll go with Turner and Anderson. Any of, any questions on? On this? Okay, can we get a roll call please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item L is the recommendation to enter into a partnership with Hamilton County Educational Service Center for a Head Start Early Learning Preschool Program for the twenty-three twenty-four school year. They've done our program for several years, but every year we sign a new memorandum of understanding.
Could we, could we get a motion please? I don't know what that was.
So moved.
Any questions?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item N M is the recommendation to approve the Mount Healthy Junior Senior High Program Planning Guide for the twenty-three twenty-four school year.
Can I get a motion please?
So moved.
Who's second?
Ms. Bryant.
Any question?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item N is the recommendation to approve the Hamilton County Educational Service Center Service Agreement for the twenty-three twenty-four school year, the total cost is two million forty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents.
Could I get a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Why do they put those pennies on the end? I laugh every time I see that. Okay, uh, can we get a roll call please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item O is the recommendation to approve the annual contract services with Hamilton Clermont Cooperative known as H C C for the twenty-three twenty-four school year. The total cost, one hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents.
Could we get a motion please?
So moved.
Any questions? Can we have roll call please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item P is the recommendation to approve the continuation of system preventative maintenance and full coverage extended warranty by EMCOR slash A L C. The total cost, fifty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, and this is a renewal, they've been our provider for a while.
What is it, a minute and nineteen minutes?
H VAC Systems.
Okay. Okay, can I get a motion to accept? Any questions? Can we have roll call please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Thank you. Item Q is the recommendation to adopt the consent agenda, which is listed for you.
Okay, can we get a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Who's second?
I'll second.
I'm still turning pages.
Well, we did all that good honery.
That's right.
Anybody got any questions? Can we have roll call please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And that's the end of my report, thank you.
That's good. Okay, well, we have no special orders, anything I want to discuss?
Yeah, would y'all have any music?
We should put some music on there, I'm gonna ask them about that, that would be good. There you go. If you went to the alumni band concert yesterday, they did a fantastic job, and they played the Alma Mater and the Fighting Owls song. It's a great event.
Any y'all want to switch these concerts?
No.
Okay, um, I need you to make, uh, this is a motion to adjust the dates and approve a contract with Dr. Valerie Hawkins as Superintendent of the Mount Healthy City School District, effective July the first twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Can we roll call please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, the next motion is just the dates of Kimberly A Hughes, Treasurer, contract to July the first twenty twenty-three to June the thirtieth twenty twenty-six, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Any questions? Okay, I want to explain on those two, it's, I guess it's the state of somebody wanted us to adjust the dates of their contract. So that's what we're doing. Okay, can we have a roll call please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And I guess really I should explain the dates or the dates of when it starts, like July the first and ends on June thirtieth. They, and I'm under the understanding that, uh, we will do that with the administration at a later date, that everybody is on the same fiscal year, that's what it is. They want them to be on the same fiscal year.
And, Ms. Ellis, we did have our records retention meeting today. And the agenda, it says July seventeenth, so we do need to adjust that date.
Okay. Yeah, we did have that today.
At five o'clock.
At five o'clock. Okay, so it was, uh, June?
Twenty-sixth.
At five P M. Okay, okay, this, we did have the records meeting today. I did, I thought she told me today, but she kept telling me it's next month. But that's not what we said on, on the meeting, on the Zoom meeting.
The records meeting is required by law that once a year, the superintendent, the treasurer, and the board president have to meet to discuss how records are handled and just to look at the issue of records in the district. So we, we will try to have it each July or June-July sometime in the summer to stay in compliance with that.
Okay, and the next regular board meeting is going to be Monday, July the seventeenth at six o'clock, same place. Uh, we're going to adjourn at eight o'clock. I'm saying eight A M. Now, I know y'all don't want to stay here that long. Can I get a motion?
So moved, oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.